Okay, okay, thank you. And I can't imagine that we will have anything but great success.
Well, eighty percent is an incredible retention rate, so I salute the Roush program for that.
President Baxter, I have a question.
Yes, sure.
First of all, I'd like to echo my colleagues' comments. I think this is a great thing we're doing. As Trustee Kellogg also mentioned, you know, it's good to pause and really acknowledge the great things that we do for our own here. So I commend you for that. I wanted to understand what the percentage of the cost tuition was based on and if that can be increased possibly? Have we looked at that? Where did we come up with that ten percent?
The ten percent number is a number that has been used at other cohorts that we just felt was a reasonable number to present to the board. Certainly, the board could increase that number. I think perhaps after you listen to the budget update, you may think differently, but it's certainly up to the board. I mean, the ten percent is just a number that's been used in other cohorts in other states that we felt we could afford and present to the board.
And the fiscal impact of that is how much?
Vice President Gable, do you recall what the fiscal impact is for the twenty students?
For the three years, it's $120,000 total.
That's very good.
Yeah, I think that's, we have room to go. I mean, professional development is such a key thing. It's something that I would support investing in. It would be great to expand that. That would be an area where we can improve on. So, thank you. This is a great, great item, and I appreciate you bringing this forward.
If we were to consider increasing, I'd want to see their grades every semester.
I'm sure they'll all be As.
Okay, could we have the vote, please? Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, seven point two, general obligation bond sale, 2008, election series D, federally taxable, 2016, election series A federally taxable, and series B tax exempt.
Information item.
It's an information item, so we do not have to vote. Okay, then we go to seven point four.
I'm sorry, I have a question on this item. If somebody can give an, I understand it's an information item, but I'm a simpleton. I may, I'm not a bond expert, and neither is the general public, so if somebody can give a broad overview of what this entails and why we're selling the bonds or why we sold the bonds, that would be fantastic.
Well, for the explanation, I'll turn it over to Vice President Gable, but we did, this question came up last time when we announced that we were selling bonds, so we wanted to make sure and bring back the details of the bond sale, but certainly Vice President Gable can elaborate more on exactly what all this means.
Thank you, President Oakley. So, yes, we sold eighty-five million dollars in order to be able to continue with our construction program that we have going, and the expectation is that we will be spending this eighty-five million dollars over the next three years with the projects that we have planned during that point in time in accordance with the 2041 master plan that the board approved previously. And so what this is, it's just giving a summary, that we did go out to market on August 23rd. The bonds were sold. They were very well received within the marketplace. I think that's why you see, we did get very good rates on these bonds, and that last bullet that we have there, the overall repayment ratio is one point four six. So if it was one point zero, that would mean that you're paying zero interest on it, and you're just paying back your principal. So the point four six, in essence, is interest that accrues on the bonds, but if you kind of liken it to a house mortgage, you know, typically, I know when I first bought my house, it was more of a three-to-one ratio, principal, you know, and two points of interest, or you're paying three times more than what you originally purchased your house for. I know that's not the case anymore. Rates are much cheaper, but right now, it's about, you're paying double for your house of what you purchased it for. So that's just kind of gives you a little bit of a guide on what we're paying back for these loans, or what the taxpayers are paying back for these loans.
So they'll be paying back within the thirty-year span of time about one point forty-six times the initial amount? Is that what that means for the repayment?
The...
One and a half approximately?
Yeah, about one, one and a half.
Okay, great, thank you.
And just to add to Vice President Gable's comments, this is where, you know, we begin to connect the dots and the actions the board takes and the interest rate the taxpayers pay. The budget you're about to approve is a main factor in the bond rating every time we go sell bonds. So the rating agencies play a big role in what the actual interest rate that the taxpayers wind up paying based on how competitive our bonds are in the market. So the more that we can maintain fiscally prudent budget, the more that the taxpayers benefit because of the healthy bond ratings that we will get in future years. I know many of you recognize this, but I think this gives us a moment to actually see where those dots are connected in the actions you're taking today.
So is this, does that mean, how do we, because we just let out the bond, we just got the voter's approval, is there any kind of measures taken into account as far as timing goes that was, you know, because it also entails measure LB, and it was sold in August? Was there any specific reason for that, that we timed it that way?
Yes, you know, we knew that we needed cash in order to continue with the construction program. So whether or not measure LB passed, we would have been issuing bonds at this point in time so that we can finish up the projects that we have underway. Since measure LB passed in June, we took advantage of the fact that we did have the additional measure in order to be able to structure the, I'll say, the deal to the best advantageous of the district and the taxpayers to try to keep the repayment rate as low as possible. We are constrained to twenty-five dollars per a hundred thousand of assessed valuation for both measure E and measure LB. We also know that three years from now, we're going to need to issue more bonds so that we get more cash in order to continue with the construction program. So working with our financial advisor, as well as with our underwriters and our bond counsel, we structured this to where we're issuing some out of measure E and some out of measure LB that is to the best advantage of the district in order to allow us to continue issuing bonds on about a three-year cycle from now until 2038, I think is the last time that we've scheduled out that we'd be issuing bonds in order to get cash.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just wanted to point out that Vice President Gable has been very good at renegotiating rates too and saving the taxpayers additional funds when there's an opportunity to renegotiate the rates, and I want to applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
One quick question, Vice President Gable. What percentage of the most recent sales fell under the bond measure E and what percentage fell under bond measure LB?
For this one, we issued, let me look right here. Most of it came out of measure LB. Only three point two million of it came out of measure E.
Just for my own education, why, what's the reason for that, or who makes that determination?
It's working with our financial advisors and our underwriters and seeing how the issue is going to impact the tax rate to the homeowners. That's kind of how we structure it. And so what we wanted to do was to, since we had already issued bonds on measure E, our tax rate was getting close to the twenty-five dollars. We wanted to stay under the twenty-five dollars, so we issued the lower amount out of measure E and then issued the remaining with measure LB.
Okay, and you said three point two came out of measure E. What was the amount out of measure LB?
Seventy-two.
That would be eighty-one point eight million, approximately.
Thank you.
Trustee Otto?
Yeah, I just had a question, and this is something that I didn't know, but it's in the information that's supplied, and that is that we can, out of these bond proceeds, pay for the cost of the election?
Yes, out of the tax exempt.
Mm-hmm, okay. And so what if it hadn't passed?
Then the unrestricted general fund would have picked up the cost.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, this is an information item.
I just have...
Trustee Kellogg?
We use percentage, how much, how much money is still left in our 2008, which is E, I believe? How much, how much money do we still have in that, approximately?
Let me tell you.
I know the science building, the fourteen million, I believe that comes out of our proposition E or 2008.
Right, so left to issue, we have around a hundred and forty-five million left out of measure E. That's, that's an approximation.
Yeah, very good. And to the superintendent, President Oakley's comment about, I don't know how many of us have had to make that trek up to San Francisco and explain our financial situation, where we get put on a little bit of the hot seat, because when your budget is eighty, eighty-five percent people, you have to explain all the salaries and everything that goes into it as you're getting, as they're looking to rate your bonds and your financial stability, et cetera, et cetera. So it's an interesting thing to sit through because it's a whole other list of questions they will really hit you on, having to defend the stability of the college. And so it's, it's an interesting process for everyone to sit through and gives you a good perspective of things. But we are very, very solid for lots of reasons, and a lot of people's good effort. So, anyway, no other questions. President Baxter?
Okay, thank you. Now we're at seven point three, 2016-17 adopted budget and education protection account expenditure plan. Vice President Gable?
Yes, so tonight, we'll be going over the adopted budget, and part of, you know, over here, we say our overview. It's really kind of the learning objectives for the Board of Trustees of what we're going to cover, but we'll, we'll go over the state budget, which was approved by the governor in June. We will show the strategic plans and the institutional priorities and how we've allocated specific things in accordance with both of those items. Briefly, we'll discuss a few of the BAC, which is the Budget Advisory Committee, the planning assumptions and highlights that went into building the budget. We'll go over the FTS history and projection, show you a list of all the district funds, and then we'll get into great detail of the unrestricted general fund, as well as some of the future budget challenges that we have. So starting off with the state budget overview, within the state budget, there was a hundred and fourteen point seven million dollars, or about two percent, for growth funding. We do not have anything budgeted in revenue for growth funding for our enrollment. There was also zero percent COLA provided in the state budget, so we don't have anything budgeted in our revenue for COLA. There was a seventy-five million dollar base allocation increase, which equated to about one point two million for us, and you'll see that on the change in the apportionment when we get to that point. There was two hundred million dollars for the strong workforce program, which means we're getting one point seven million. This is a grant program, so this funding is in the restricted general fund. There was also two million dollars for the equal employment opportunity fund. We will be getting sixty thousand dollars for that. Again, this is a grant program, so these funds are in the restricted general fund. There was five million dollars for a zero textbook cost degree. This is a competitive grant, and at this point in time, we don't know if we will be applying for it, so more to come on that later if we do apply. A hundred and eighty-four point six million for the deferred maintenance and instructional equipment. Again, for the second year in a row, there is no match requirement on these funds. We are getting around three point three million, and the Budget Advisory Committee allocated two point eight million of those funds for scheduled maintenance, which you'll see in the capital outlay fund detail, and a half a million for instructional equipment, which you'll see in the restricted general fund detail. Again, no COLA for any of the categorical programs. Since they didn't give COLA for unrestricted revenue, they didn't give COLA for any of the categorical programs. There's forty-one point nine million in Proposition 39. This is the energy efficiency and renewable generation funding. This is the fourth year of five years of funding, so we will be getting seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for that, and we plan to do lighting retrofits with that money. There was a hundred and five point five million to pay down mandated costs. This is provided out to all of the districts, whether or not they make mandated cost reimbursement claims or not, and that is done, passed out on an FTES basis. This was a significant decrease from the 15-16 year, so we're getting one point nine million dollars this year. Last year, we received over eleven million, so it's a nine point four million dollar decrease in funding in 15-16. There's twenty million dollars that was provided for another new grant, an online education initiative, and we haven't made the determination whether or not we'll be applying for that grant at this point in time. So our strategic plan, Dr. Bag gave us an overview a couple meetings ago on the strategic plan. Here are the four broad goals: to innovate, to achieve equitable student success, accelerate college readiness, build community, and then lastly, invest in people and support structures for transformation. And then we have our institutional priorities, and these priorities were developed by the College Planning Committee back in the spring. As a result of all of the departmental plans that fed up into vice president-level plans and utilizing those vice president-level plans, the College Planning Committee developed this institutional, or these institutional priorities, and you see that they are very similar to our strategic plans. This next area is kind of some of the highlights of things that we have in the budget and how we feel that it's meeting either the strategic plan or institutional priority or both. So we are hiring twenty-eight full-time, or we hired twenty-eight full-time faculty, the ones that were worth the wait. We have computers and office space for those new faculty. We restored twenty-seven classified positions, and then you see we have winter intercession, technology refresh, instructional equipment. We have four new management positions, business process reviews and design thinking, and I won't go into all of these, or all of the next ones, but as you can see, there are several things that are specific in the budget that are meeting our strategic plans and goals. Lead Academy's on here. The rest of the items on this page here are primarily grants that we have within the restricted general fund. And then lastly, this is the mandated cost allocation. So last year, when we got that influx of one-time money, over eleven million dollars, the Budget Advisory Committee agreed to dispersing it on one-time projects. So the projects that you see here did not spend all of the funding that was awarded in 15-16. Those funds are carrying over so that they can continue with the work on that. So you see that we still have the Innovation Fund that has carryover, scheduled maintenance projects, the website, and the communication plan implementation, professional development, Title IX, and then the strategic plan implementation as well. So some of the budget assumptions that BAC prepared, the first one being that we may be moving budgets around. That's what budget redirections means. If we find a need for one area that is higher prioritized in this fiscal year versus last fiscal year, we may move money back and forth. So that was kind of the first assumption. The FTES target is twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. We did include a half a percent deficit factor in our apportionment, and just to remind folks, the deficit factor exists due to the way the state does the statewide budgeting. So when the state prepares their budget, they assume a set dollar amount for property taxes and enrollment fees are going to come in through both the students paying the enrollment fees and then through the counties for all of the property taxes that are assessed. If at any given time, either the property taxes or the enrollment fees don't come in at the level that the state budgeted them, they don't make up the difference with state apportionment. Instead, what they do is apply a deficit factor. So we have a half a percent deficit factor included in our budget assumption in case that happens. And then lastly, on here, we have total cost of ownership is an assumption which primarily means that if we're going to go into a project, or let's say we're going to buy a piece of equipment, we're going to look to see, are there maintenance agreements that need to go along with that piece of equipment in future years that now we're going to have to fund? So that's kind of what total cost of ownership means. We put into the budget assumptions that we'd have a five and a half minimum unrestricted reserve. As part of the institutional effectiveness, the IAPI, so institutional effectiveness planning initiative, community college districts are now required to set a fund balance goal, and we did this through the Budget Advisory Committee, and then we took that to the College Planning Committee, both, and they agreed that our long-term goal for our fund balance would be fifteen percent, and our short-term goal, which is basically one year, would be twelve and a half percent. You see on here that we have set aside a reserve for load banking and vacation liability, which is two point seven million. That was what we owed at the end of June 30th for the unused load banking and the unused vacation that employees had earned. And then we had the benefit cost changes. So as we know, PERS and STIRS are both increasing substantially each year for the next four years. STIRS increased by one point eight five percent, which cost us about nine hundred and thirty-three thousand. PERS increased by two point zero four one percent, which cost us about six hundred and sixty-three thousand. And then we have our retiree benefits. Our annual required contribution increased two point four million, so that was a significant increase in that area as well. So moving into the FTES history and projection, you can see that we've had somewhat of a staggered past. Ten-eleven, if you remember, that was the year when Governor Schwarzenegger was elected, and we had been told to plan for cuts, and everybody planned for cuts, and then in January, they told us, oh, here's some growth money. So we all scrambled, added hundreds of sections, and we were able to grow significantly, and then the cuts really hit in eleven, twelve, and twelve thirteen, as you can see there. So ten-eleven was somewhat of an anomaly. Eleven, twelve through thirteen, fourteen are really the recession years. You can see in fourteen, fifteen, we did grow up to the twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-five level, and we did that, I would say strategically, by borrowing FTES from summer of fifteen. So we borrowed just under three hundred and seventy FTES from summer of fifteen so that we could get paid for it for the fourteen, fifteen fiscal year. That was the last year that the State Chancellor's Office was going to allow us to grow unfettered, basically back to our high point before the recession. So we borrowed from summer of fifteen as much as we felt comfortable doing at the time, hoping that we would be able to make that twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-five in the fifteen, sixteen year. As you can see, we did not make the twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-five in the fifteen, sixteen year. So as of fifteen, sixteen, we are in stabilization. What that means is we did not generate the same amount of FTES that we generated in fourteen, fifteen. In fifteen, sixteen, we will still be paid as if we generated the twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-five in sixteen, seventeen. So in the current fiscal year that we're in, it's imperative that we get back up to that twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. If we don't, we will lose funding. And just to give you a little bit of the magnitude of funding that we have on the line, let's say in sixteen, seventeen, we only generated nineteen thousand and seventy-seven dollars, we would lose almost seven point eight million dollars in funding. So that's how much stabilization revenue we are getting. So I know Dr. Long and all the department heads and all the faculty are working very, very hard to try to increase our course offerings and increase the FTES so that we can get back up to that twenty thousand and seven hundred and seventy-five level.
Can I, can I ask you a real quick question? But, but we know that literally all over the state, with very, very few exceptions, nobody's growing. And there are these old saws about, well, everybody's going back to work, they don't go to education, but I don't think that that's the total explanation. Are we developing strategies, enrollment management strategies? Are we doing, I mean, I, I can't help but notice that we're doing, because I read the newspapers, things about the ITT and the Corinthian students, and that's very complicated because there's no, they were unaccredited, so you can't count them, but at the same time, there are people that we might be able to get, and can you just, as an aside mention, kind of what we're doing to try and get back to twenty-seven, seventy-five?
Yes, we're doing, we're doing several things. You know, we are trying to launch a marketing campaign that will, you know, really kick off hopefully mid-fall to try to capture some of the last eight-week sessions, but also for winter and spring. You know, Dr. Long mentioned that we are working towards creating some of those guided pathways, which will hopefully help with the students. You know, we are in the process of developing an enrollment management plan that the campus will be working on. So, you know, it is difficult. There are probably close to twenty-five districts that are in stabilization and/or restoration. We haven't quite seen the number at, you know, in June, it was twenty-three districts, but we know several more districts have fallen into that when they finalized their FTES reporting in July. We just haven't seen all the numbers yet from the State Chancellor's Office. So it is a very difficult time. It seems that the large urban districts are struggling more than others. You do have your outliers in, I would say, the more rapidly growing areas that are growing in FTES, but it is more difficult for, for us that are kind of landbound and have eight colleges around us.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so this just gives you an overview of all of the funds that we have within the district. There are eleven funds. The one that we focus on obviously is the unrestricted general fund, because that's the one that really is our operating budget. All the other funds have very specific purposes and/or are restricted for use. And so you can see what we're showing here is what was the adopted budget for each of those funds in fifteen, sixteen? Where did they end the year at June 30th of sixteen? And what's the adopted budget for the sixteen, seventeen year? Overall, our adopted budget in sixteen, seventeen is one point two billion dollars. And I did say billion. This is the first time that we've gotten into the billions, and that is thanks to our local taxpayers and voting in measure LB. You see that we now will be reporting two separate bond funds. So we have the general obligation bond fund, 2008, measure E, and then the general obligation bond fund, 2016, measure LB. Some of the significant differences on the restricted general fund, so that's the second line there, you see that we have a forty-nine point two million in the adopted budget. You know, we have two million dollars for a relatively new adult education grant that we're working with. There's one and a half million dollars for the student equity funds. There's seven point six million dollars for, I'll call it, the... There's $7.6 million for, I'll call it the AMTEL, which is the Advanced Manufacturing Engineering Technology Linked Learning Consortium, I believe? Okay, I got a thumbs up from Amy. Thank you. And a 1.7 million for Strong Workforce. So that was that new program that just came in this year.